We need a roll call, please.
Who's gonna do it?
You gotta call out.
Okay. Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Lazaro? Alderman Sizmarzki?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Say yes.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
She said here.
What about you?
She's me, here. Okay, here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor police.
Here. Now, I'd like to have the... Like to welcome the Westview Elementary 4th grade class here this evening on government night. And if we could start from that end, introduce yourselves into the microphone.
My name is Alexander Rosnak.
And you are Alderman?
Of the 4th.
Alderman of the 4th ward.
My name is Kayla Larson, and I'm in the Alderman of the 4th.
I'm Joanna Kokielko, and I'm in Ward 4.
My name is Berenice Garfias, and I'm in Ward 2.
My name is Camille Markowski, and I am the City Manager.
My name is Diego Meza, and I'm the Mayor.
My name is Jocelyn Hastrok, and I'm the City Attorney.
My name is Angela Teldon, and I am City Clerk.
My name is Devon Chedemwogga, and I am Alderman 3rd.
My name is Catherine Mendez, and I am Alderman 3rd.
My name is Mudasa Chuan, and I'm Alderman number 1.
My name is Jacey Palumbo, and I'm in Ward 1. Thank you, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd.
Second. Yes, it... You're first. Need a motion?
I'll first.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second?
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Uh...
Aye. Aye.
Post? No opposition, but that passes. Do any citizens... Do any citizens to be heard on matters not listed on this agenda?
Next. We have somebody? No, no, that's a... You'll be coming up. Well, actually, we can let you go now, go ahead.
Well, this is very exciting that it's Student Government Night and seeing some familiar faces from Westview School and Dr. Corbett. So, congratulations, kids, that's awesome. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, my name is Garrett George, and I'm here to represent the Young Musicians Mentor Band, which is a summer program that serves students of the Bensonville and Wooddale communities. I've presented in the past, in previous years, regarding the Young Musicians Mentor Band. I kind of talked to you a little bit about that. The Young Musicians Mentor Band, or the... We call it the Mentor Band for short, provides a high level of music instruction in small and large group settings for students in both the Wooddale and Bensonville communities, for students entering grades 7 through 12. So, we've recently done some concerts here in Wooddale over the summer. It's a summer, kind of enrichment program, if you will. And we've performed in the summer at Wooddale School District 7, at their Center for... The Wooddale Center for the Arts. And we have 31 students, or 31 residents of Wooddale who participate in the Young Musicians Mentor Band. So, what we do is we have a six-week program, and they spend half that time with some small groups and some large groups, and we prepare a few concerts for the season. Again, one being at the Wooddale Center of the Arts, the other one being at the Music in the Parks, the Music in the Park, held in Bensonville Town Center. And then we do a field trip to the... To Millennium Park to hear the Grant Park Symphony Orchestra perform. And so, that's like, kind of a nice... That's a big family picnic, and we get other community members involved in that. So, we are here tonight to humbly request a donation of $500 to continue to maintain this program throughout the summer. And in the past, the Village of Wooddale has graciously contributed a donation to the Young Musicians Mentor Band, and so has other agencies and organizations in the area, like Wooddale School District 7. And they also have helped us with some performing venues and some logistical assistance, amongst other Bensonville and other intergovernmental, like, inter-community organizations. I could go into more detail on that, but, you know, there's just the Bensonville Arts Council, local vendors and local businessmen and women, and small businesses just contributing in donations and so forth. And so, what we do is we just advertise who our donors are with our banner, and we make sure we give them shout-outs at our concert and put them into our program. So, we would... I'd be happy to answer any questions about that program, but we would just request to see if we can continue that support for the coming 2015 summer season.
Thank you very much, is there any questions?
How do you sign up?
Ah, great question. So, if you are in band and you have Mr. Marong as your band director, right, at Westview? You would... You would... He would... He'll have the order form, and there will be... There's a website. There's a website that kids can go to, or families can go to, and fill out that registration form. And anybody from... Anybody who's a part of our school and Wooddale and Bensonville communities, those two areas, can sign up if they're entering grades 7 through 12. And there's also a paper form if people prefer to go that route.
Is there any cost in doing the band thing?
Yes, that's a great question. There's a student fee of $35 for the summer that covers... That covers all the instruction, six weeks, four hours a week, for... And then the activities, the concert, and so forth. Yes.
I make a motion to give the band $500.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion here.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Do any other citizens wish to do the council?
Being no other citizens, we do have one written communique. Have a letter here.
My daughter is a Wooddale star at the Wooddale Stars Baton Swirling Corp. Will be sponsoring a bowling fundraiser at Wooddale Bowl, located at 155 W Irving Park Road in Wooddale, Illinois. The proceeds of this event will be used to help the team's annual trip to America's Youth on Prairie National Twirling Championships held at North... Notre Dame University this coming July. We would appreciate your support for our goals, thank you very much.
Ms. Jennifer Loeb. Do we miss... Do we want to make a donation to the Baton Stars for their trip to Notre Dame?
I'll make the motion.
I make a motion tomorrow, 50.
$250? Do we have a second?
Second.
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 Any other questions?
Roll call. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki? Alderman E. Wesley?
Say yes.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Yes. Okay, under Mayor's report, Student Government Day, April 16, 2015. What we'd like to do here is hear from each of the students. And I'm sorry, Mr. Ryan Peterson, you didn't get to say your name earlier, if you want to use the microphone. We can start with you, since we missed you earlier.
For the input on Prairie Fest?
Well, we just want you to say what you'd like to see here in Wooddale, whatever you'd like. Is the microphone on there for him, Chief?
Um, I don't think so.
Sandra, put you up. It's on. All right, let's move a little closer. So, what would you like to see in Wooddale? Would like to have the students tell us a little bit what they're looking for in the community.
Um, well, what I would like is the Prairie Fest to be, um... I didn't like the Prairie Fest last year, so I'd like it to be how it was two years ago, because the one ride that seems like it was a good ride, I was too short for. So, I didn't... There were no really good rides there.
Thank you, Ed. It's very important, let's make a note of that. We made a note for our Prairie Fest meeting.
Uh, Jacey?
Um, I would also like to see more to the Prairie Fest, add more rides and more things to do at the Prairie Fest.
Like what?
Um, more things, more prizes, and, um, more games to play.
Mudasa?
I would like, um, more entertainment for kids, like, for example, like, laser rags, Safari Land, more arcades, and more parks.
Thank you, Catherine.
I agree with Mudasa, I also think that we should have more parks in Wooddale.
Thank you, Devon.
Um, I agree with both of them.
Jocelyn? Jocelyn? Oh, Devon?
I agree with Jacey on the more games and the more prizes.
Jocelyn?
Um, I think we should have more parks, um, so more people can play.
Camille?
I think we should add more stuff to the water park, like more, um, maybe water slides.
Berenice?
I agree with Camille, um, because of right now that, um, I would want more water slides for the water park.
Joanna?
I agree with both of them, I think we should, um, get more water slides and maybe extend the pool.
Uh, Kayla?
Um, I want there to be more hostables... Hostables and more doctors nearby, like, lots more, because there's lots of people that keep on getting injured.
Alexander?
I would like to add some of the old rides, because they were really good. And by the way, it's... The Prairie Fest has moved somewhere else, and it's bigger. By the junior high.
Um, I would think that on each road in Wooddale, there should be sidewalks, because lots of kids go on streets, and sometimes they have accidents. Um... And thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, these are great ideas, and since we talked about the Prairie Fest here, when are we gonna put up a sign over there saying Prairie Fest is gonna be here and start advertising that? Mr. Murmers?
That is an excellent idea, we already have ordered the sign, and it should be up there within the next couple of weeks.
Sorry. Next, we have a... Proclamation for Arbor Day?
In 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed as various times of the year throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the
Erosion.
Erosion of our precious topsoil due to the wind and water cut... Cutting, heating, and cooling costs. Moderate the temperature, clean air, produce live, giving oxygen, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and provide for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renew...
Renewable source.
Renewable source, resource, giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses. And whereas trees
Beautify.
Beautify our community, increase property values, enhance the
Economic vitality.
Economic vitality of the business areas. And whereas trees were properly planted are a source of joy and
Spiritual renewal.
Spiritual renewal. Now, there are...
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, and the other police mayor of the city of Wooddale, do hereby proclaim April 24, 2015, as Arbor Day in the city of Wooddale, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Post.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two items, one of which my colleague, Mr. City Manager, will help me with. That's the first item. At their annual conference in March, the Illinois Association for Flood Plane and Stormwater Management recognized the city of Wooddale's numerous flood-prone property acquisitions by presenting the city with its 2015 Flood Mitigation Award. This award is given each year to an individual or community that has encouraged flood hazard reduction through a buyout program, retrofitting, preparation of a mitigation plan, or other similar mitigation efforts. The Wooddale City Council really has been proactive with stormwater initiatives recently, and we'd like to thank Baxter and Woodman for helping us out with the award. I think Bill Blacky's here tonight. And that being said, congrats to the council on their hard work to get the award. And I think my colleague, Mr. City Manager, has the award to present to the mayor and the council.
Thank you to the entire city council, the Stormwater Committee for all their hard work, and staff. Thank you.
One other item, FAU routes. Earlier this week, at the DMMC board meeting, for those of you who don't know, that's the DuPage Mayors and Managers Board. The city of Wooddale and all the other cities or villages in DuPage County are part of this government entity. At that meeting, the city of Wooddale was able to get the MMC to pass nine local Wooddale streets as part of FAU routes. And what an FAU route does is it allows the city of Wooddale, instead of paying themselves to get the road repaved or reconstructed, we get federal grant dollars to get the road reconstructed or repaved at, I believe, a 70% grant-funded and 30% local-funded. So, the city was able to get them to agree to give us nine FAU routes, and in no particular order. I have the nine for the council, and again, I'll put this in your packets tomorrow. And again, an FAU route has to meet strict criteria, so you just can't pick any route, or any street that you like. There's many criteria that have to be met. So, again, the nine streets, we have Division Street, Wooddale Road to the train station entrance. We have Forest Preserve Drive from Addison Road to Mill Road. We have Commercial Hillside from Wooddale Road to Route 83. We have Middle Drive, Wooddale Road to Devon. We have Foster Drive, Wooddale Road to Route 83. We have Elizabeth Drive, Wooddale Road to Addison Road. We have Potter Street, Addison Road to Mill Road. Liville Boulevard from Thorndale to Riker, and Prospect Avenue from Irving to Forest Preserve Drive. This is not to say these streets are getting done right away. We follow a Streets Efficiency Program, and they're all ranked. But when they are redone, now the Wood... City of Wooddale only has to pay 30% if they are awarded the grant, which we now qualify for. That concludes my report. I don't know if the... My colleague has more reporting, I'm not sure.
You have more reporting?
No.
I'd like to thank the staff for all the work. And the FAU routes.
Do we have a question?
Yeah, Jeff, is there an expiration on that FAU? Is there a time limit on when we can use them?
No, that's the good news. Once we qualify as an FAU route, it's forever an FAU route. We do have to reapply every year to get the funding for the project that year, but we never have to reapply to be able to get the funding. So, now we are always able to get the funding for the streets. It's just when we're ready to redo them ourselves, we apply for the money. And then hopefully, with the mayor being on the board at DMMC, and myself a previous board member, we have a pretty good shot at maybe getting the funding.
And Mr. York is also on the Transportation Committee, so it goes through that committee where the funds are distributed. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. We have six items on the Consent Agenda. I entertain a motion to approve unless there's objections to any items. Do we have any? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of professional services agreement with HR Green and the landscaping... For the landscaping of Veterans Park and the North Waste Water Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $19,800. Item number two, approval of partial payment request number 16 to Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $557,287.33. Item number three, inordinance adjusting the schedule of business license component fees set forth in Section 4.207 of Chapter 4, Article 2 of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale. Item number four, approval of variance extension at the property of 150 Janus Lane. Item number five, award of contract with Martam Construction Incorporated for the Ward 2 Phase 2 CIP project in an amount not to exceed $1,873,218. Item number six, approval of squad replacement purchases in a not-to-exceed amount of $50,728 from Roche Ford. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. And just so you know, you kids just spent, uh, about two and a half... Almost two and a half million dollars of the city's money. You guys better be more responsible. Yes, sir.
Treasurer, is there money in the budget for this? Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, planning and zoning. Committee Chair reports planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
Mayor have three ports, one, a resolution.
A resolution of the city of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois, approving of sublease agreement for vendor service at the Wooddale Metro Train Station.
Is that your motion?
That is your motion.
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have a question? Yes. No, we have a question. Yes, go ahead.
Where does the money go when, um, the lottery ticket hits?
The question is, if this gentleman, he sells lottery tickets, and the winning ticket... If there's a winning ticket sold there, is it 1%? Does the gentleman that leases from us get the 1%? Or does it go to the city? I don't know, but it's not an agreement.
It's illegal.
It's a legal question.
Legal. Ask the attorney.
I'll look into it, I believe the city would benefit.
Nice answer.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
We have a motion and a second? Roll call.
Alderman, yeah? Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
Next report?
An ordinance approving the tax increment financing district eligibility study red... Redevelopment plan and project for the Thorndale Corridor red... Redevelopment project area. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who seconded? Is it Mike? Jean? Jean? Jean second.
Are there any questions?
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
An ord... Ordinance adopting the Thorndale Corridor redevelopment Ordinance adopting the Thorndale Corridor redevelopment project area. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Eugene.
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
That passes.
An ordinance? That is the end of my report.
No, no, there's one more. Number four, number four. It's a small one.
An ordinance adopt- adopting tax incre-
Increment.
Increment financing. That is my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. That conclude your report? Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Roy Wesley. No report.
No report.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano.
One report, Mayor.
A resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Morton Salt Inc. For the 2015 through 2016 winter road salt purchase in the, in the not to exceed amount of 100,729.20 cents. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
All right.
Question?
And Alderman, Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
I have, I have a question, Matt can answer it. Matt, is that, are we ordering 1,100 tons again, according to what I understand?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, so this contract is for 1,100 tons, but in order, or this contract that we were able to get into was an 8130 contract. So we can, um, we have to purchase at least 880 tons. We have the right and responsibility to order up to 1,440 tons. So, um, we have, uh, we can order at the minimum 880 tons at this rate or all the way up to 1,400 tons at the same rate.
Do you have a follow up?
Yeah, I have a follow up.
Go ahead.
How much, how much salt do we have in storage right now after this winter?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Currently, we have about 200 tons, 250 tons at the most.
Go ahead, follow up.
Is there, so why would we not? I just don't want to run into another predicament that we got 1,100 tons sitting in our, that we, I know we got to take 80% of it or whatever, and I don't want to run into a problem that we don't have in storage, because we almost ran into that problem this year.
Matt, if I understand what you just said, so we took everything we were supposed to this past year and we only have 200 ton left?
Yes.
So by doing the 1,100 and, uh, so we have to take 880, that'll basically bring us back up to 1,100. Again, is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, this year we used over 1,100 tons on the road this year, because we had extra left over from last year. So at the end of the year, we ultimately had about 250 tons left, um, within our storage buttons. So we used approximately about 1,300 and I think it was 1,325 tons this year.
All right. Any other questions on that? Alderman Sizmarski?
No, yes.
Yes, sir.
Have we ever thought of using?
Bee juice?
Mr. York?
Uh, yes, we do. We have thought of that and we do use it currently. And we are also looking into purchasing another tank and utilizing it more in the future in order to help reduce the total amount of salt that we utilize onto the roadways.
Yes, another question down at the end?
How much salt do we have stored?
Mr. York?
Yeah, about 200 tons currently on site.
How much can we store?
Um, about 315.
That's max.
That is, that is max.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes? That conclude your report? Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Sizmarski?
A revolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wood Dale and Flashing Thunder Fireworks for the 2015 Prairie Fest. Fireworks display the amount of 1,100 souls- 11,000 dollars.
Yes, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second?
Do I have a second? We need a second. I didn't hear it.
Who's the second?
Eugene's second. Eugene's second, okay. Now, do we have a question?
Do we have a question?
Yes, go ahead, call his name.
Devin, uh, is there music with those fireworks?
Yes, there is. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Is there any music requests?
Did you want to sing, is that what you're saying?
Alderman Wesley's volunteer to sing.
Which one?
A duet.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
You kids think the fireworks are pretty good? Have you seen them the last couple of years? I don't know, you guys don't sound excited. I don't know. Might have to up the game.
Earlier today, they talked a lot more. I don't know, they're very quiet.
They're shy on camera?
Too many adults in the room, I think. Hmm.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
A revolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wood Dale and the Illinois Department of Transportation for the intersection safety protect- project on a Wood Dale Road and Irving Park Road in an amount not to exceed eight sol- eight thousand thirty-five thousand and then-
Eight hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who's the second? Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. That conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you. And your kids just spent almost another $950,000. You guys spent a lot of money today.
Do we send all the complaints to their house?
Yeah.
Block everybody's phone number before they leave.
Next, under Other Business, uh, under Stormwater Commission Report, we do have the River Sweep, May 16th, coming up. If you did not sign up, you could still go online through the city website and sign up. O'Hare Noise Committee, Alderman Jacob.
Just a couple of things from our meeting. One of our members that attended the ONCC meeting, and, uh, back in 2004, the flights were 992,471. Today, they're at 881,933 for the year. So we are actually down with the, with the flights. Also, we're, as of October of 2013, we went from 18 runway configurations and we're now down to four. Another fact was the fly quiet zone, uh, that's only for departures, not for landings. And the new permanent noise monitors are, should be in place in April or May. We're, we are not getting one, but Bensonville's getting one, which is in the flight path. And finally, in July and August, there's going to be a meeting, two public meetings of jet noise and air quality impacts of, on opening the new parallel runways. And I think Attorney Pat Bond has some good news for us as well. Thank you.
Yes, I will defer my report.
Not sure if everyone saw these two bills getting introduced and passed through the state senate in the blink of an eye today. Six? Senate Bill? 636 expands the maximum number of runways at O'Hare from eight to 10. And Senate? Senate Bill 637 prohibits dis- decommissioning of the diagonal runways on O'Hare. These bills were introduced by Chicago Senator John Morrell?
Morrell.
Morrell and-
And actually, I know it sounds like it's bad news, but it's actually good news. If the, the plan at O'Hare was to decommission the diagonal routes, and what that meant, and some of you have experienced that, is it's increased the number of planes flying over this city and flying over your house. By expanding the number of runways, what it will do is redistribute the flights over more runways, allowing the diagonal runways to be open, so the flights will go over the industrial park up into, uh, up in Elk Grove, as opposed to coming directly over your house. That's something that the city of Wood Dale and a number of surrounding communities have fought for for a long time. So it still is waiting the governor's signature, but it went through the, uh, through the House and Senate today in, in very quickly, in record time. And by not decommissioning or taking out of use those diagonal runways, they're still available to be used. So rather than seeing the concentration on the east-west runways that you're seeing now, they're going to be sending those back the way they were before, sending those up on a diagonal route up to, uh, like I said, to the Elk Grove. So you're going to have fewer, the number of flights won't change. You'll just have fewer flights on those particular runways if the governor signs it. So that's actually encouraging news and it's been an effort, collective effort by a number of the surrounding communities.
Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarski?
That closes our report.
Go ahead.
Pat, did they say anything on how they plan to do it? Because if those diagonal runways go across operating runways, how are they? I mean, they're not saying they're going to ours.
You want me to take that?
You've got to shut down eight runways for-
What's going on is they want to make sure we have all options open. I mean, as, uh, as everybody might have seen in the paper, the communities have, we have 11 communities, suburban O'Hare Commission. We've hired the experts to talk, to look over operations of the airport, not to mention the other group would deal with the advocacy and trying to possibly pass some legislation. So if they decommission and get rid of those runways, then those are gone and we have no option, that those options are eliminated, at least by getting the state to, uh, try and keep them open. You know, we know it could be another Meg, you know, what was it, Megs Field, where they X them in the middle of the night, but hopefully not. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, can the state of Illinois, I thought those were, that was FAA, federal law, the number of runways, can the state override the federal government? That's my question.
Pat, you know, I, I think it was given by state, the number of runways. Yeah, the number is, is got, there's a state authorization. There's also FAA component, which is, uh, the oversight for safety purposes. So they, you know, that's going to be worked out with the air traffic controllers through the FAA that will require them to initiate guidelines for when those planes can cross over on those diagonal runways as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, uh, next is approval list of bills, Alderman Sizmarski.
April 16th, 2015, 888,601.70.
And that is your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I have a question for Brad. We had the, uh, check number seven, it was for the train station, the Metro roof repairs. Don't we have, the train station's bill was in the last five years, if I recall. Is there any type of warranty or anything?
Who's going to take that? Is that, uh, Matt?
That's, uh, page one. Uh, precision quality contractor. That's sequence number seven.
Yeah, I think that was just regular maintenance, that's not, um, not a warrantable repair, just a regular maintenance.
What page was that?
Page 20, so.
Go ahead, Mr. York, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, that, it's longer than five years. So that, if there was a warranty, it's probably over.
It's not, it wasn't a warrantable repair, it was just a normal maintenance repair.
But according to the email I got today, it was for a wa- water, a water problem. So that's not covered under what?
No, it was, uh, it was at the flashings, I believe, of the, of the roof, which isn't, which isn't part of the repairs. Uh, which isn't part of, it's just, uh, normal maintenance that we needed to do to make sure that, uh, that, that flashing stays, stays up. So it's not, it's not a warrantable issue, or we would have used a warranty on it.
We know how long the warranty is on that.
Well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I do not know, I do not know exactly what the warranty on that is. It's usually five to 10 years. You know, there's, there's a difference between warranties on the shingles versus an actual, um, if it's a non-shingle related, if it's a flashing issue, which is, I believe this one was, then, like I said, it's not, it's not warrantable.
Anything further? Any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Mayor, I, I have a question on that, that roof repair we did.
The same one we just talked about or a different one?
No.
The, the train station?
Right, the train station.
All right, go ahead.
The, the question is on that, we just did, uh, inside repair work on that from the, from last year with the ceiling, the drywall cracking and that. So now, going over there, because I go downtown, the point is, we still get the leak at the same spot, and so now we're going to pay again for the same contractor, the, the drywall again? I mean, we could bring it up later, but, yeah, bring it up later. That's fine.
All right, well, we'll look into, we'll get the, all the facts corrected. Any other questions on the bills? Need a roll call?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes. That passes.
And you guys spent another 888,000. It's a lot of money. Uh, before we go to land acquisition, I mean executive session for land acquisition and review of minutes, on behalf of the entire city council and the city, we have these Student Government Day Proclamations. Student Government Day, April 16th, 2015. Whereas the education of our youth is important to the future of our city, state, and nation, and whereas teaching students to be involved and knowledgeable about local government is something we should always strive to be doing, and whereas the students from Westview Elementary School learned about local government today from city officials, and whereas we wish to honor the students, teachers, and city officials who participated in this day, now therefore I and the Seattle Police hereby proclaim Thursday, April 16th, 2015 as Student Government Day in Wood Dale, Illinois. And before we pass these out, do we have this, teachers, I know one of the teachers is here. Two of the teachers? If we could come up, introduce yourself for the residents, so.
I am Rachel Lichten, former resident and, uh, former Westview student.
I am Stacy Minor. I also am a former Wood Dale resident and Westview student. Just want to say you guys did a wonderful job and I think they deserve a big round of applause. of applause.
No, wait, you twenty, you twenty to grab one? I'd like to, I got two more. I'd like everybody, the council to stand and hand it to their counterparts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go. Thank you. Kids, you want to stand there? If we could take a nice picture, if you kids come into the? All right, so before we, before we take the picture? All right, we are going to make, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the review of official minutes and land acquisition. Do, do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're, we're adjourned.